All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the General Government Subcommittee. The time is now 5:02 and convenient this meeting to order. We are being joined today here in the chambers by Councilor Timmy Allen. Good, thank you, Councilor Allen, for joining us. And we're both, we're being joined in no particular order by Chris Ignoli, Director of DPW. Thank you, Chris, for joining us. We are joined by ordinance Officer May. Thank you for joining us, Officer May. Ordinance Officer Rosemont, thank you for joining us. And Ms. Sue Haley RC, thank you for joining us, Ms. RC. And Councilor Tracy Willfield, thank you for joining us, Councilor Willfield. The purpose of today's meeting on the agenda is discussion of the food truck proposed ordinance on the food truck ordinance. Just to give you some background, it is my understanding that, for whatever reason, it appeared that the food trucks have really been proliferated throughout the city and has hesitated some changes in the ordinances so that we can regulate the use of these food truck ordinance as there has been numerous complaints and numerous concerns from residents we got in the food trucks. I know that Chris Ignoli along with Councilor Allen has been working on this for a little while. And so, so this is the first hearing we're going to be having on this. It is, to be fair, it's quite a meaty packet. I can tell Chris he spent time on this, so I'm sure there's going to be tons of questions on this. And so, all right, Chris, you want to start?
Sure. I get paid by the word, so it made it a little beefier. So, as you said, Councilor Devia, thank you, everybody who's here. Earlier this year, Councilor Allen and a number of other councilors had contacted me regarding issues surrounding mobile food trucks. The city of Springfield does not have an ordinance specifically for food trucks. However, seven, eight, nine years ago, we did put together a document that is in our occupancy manual that discusses the operation of food trucks on the public way. Right now, there is technically no ordinance overseeing the food trucks. So, and especially really minimal information regarding food trucks on private property. So, what this whole discussion was is we probably had five or six meetings over the course of the late winter, spring, and early summer to go over the requirements of what we wanted as part of this ordinance. I'm not sure I volunteered, but I was given the job of putting the whole thing together. And really, what we did is we expanded on what we had done for the food trucks on public property. And as far as food trucks on public property, for the most part, it has worked okay. We haven't had too many issues, and when we have had issues, they've been addressed either by our group or with the assistance of police to get things cleaned up. So, in this document, what we did is that we are modifying Chapter 279 of the ordinance, which is peddling and soliciting. So, after discussion with the law department, we agreed that was the right ordinance to put this into. And really, today, I just wanted to kind of go over the highlights of what is truly being proposed. If I keep losing my glasses here, I'll be able to read it. It's agreed upon that the permitting that we're going to do for both public and private property will be run through the DPW. So, any entity that's going to need a permit, they got to come to the DPW. We are going to take all of this documentation and put it into our occupancy manual. So, when people are looking for the document, aside from just looking at the ordinance, it will be added to our manual. Probably sometime later this fall, or maybe during the winter, I'm going to be coming for the council for a modification of our manual anyways. So, this will have some information, this will have some added information in there. Food trucks, right now, we have a requirement or rule, they can operate from 7:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and that's been on public property. However, what we're doing is we're modifying that, that if they are on private property and there's an existing business there, they cannot operate outside the hours of the business. And not to pick on particular locations, however, you know, there's businesses there that close at 9 o'clock, however, the food truck would stay open till 2:00, 2:30 in the morning. So, if it is on private property, it has to comply with the hours that the business is there. On private property, public property, they can operate till 1:00. On private property, regardless of the business type, they cannot operate after 11:00, 11:00 PM, excuse me. Also, if they are going to be on private property, they do need to comply with zoning, meaning, you know, having a setback, location of parking, all that sort of stuff. We've had some issues over the past few years where vendors are on private property, but they are literally at the backside of the curb. And, you know, they have an awning that goes over the sidewalk, and some people can't get by, so they would have to have a 10-foot setback, move back, be able to have the people on the sidewalk pass. The permits that we're going to issue for private property are going to be in six-month increments. So, because some of these vendors just operate during the, obviously during the summer season, so we picked six months for that. On a private property, and I know I'm going to get some pushback on this, we have said on a private property that there can be no more than two food trucks. And throughout the city, there are some locations where they are more. So, I'm sure this will be a point of discussion as we move along. If you are going to be on private property and you're submitting an application, you got to give us some sketches, just like we went on a site. Where's it going to be located, parking, are you impacting existing parking? And I go back, Councilor Allen had one in his neighborhood on Island Pond Road where a vendor was in a parking lot, took up both of the handicap parking spaces, and blocked one of the entrances. So, therefore, he was in violation of rules anyways. However, what we don't want is somebody going onto a site, taking up two-thirds of the parking, now there's not enough parking. So, they're going to have to comply with that. And I mentioned, you know, loss of parking on private property has to be addressed. If a parking on, if a private property has a requirement to have 40 spaces, and the food truck, and they have 40 spaces, and the food truck takes away 10 of them, they're not going to be in compliance, they're not going to be able to get a permit. We've put in that we have on the public side, no food truck can be closer than 500 feet to a residentially zone property or residential use property. The distinction between those two is that throughout the city, there are residences that could be in a business zone. So, what we are trying to do is address the residential aspect. All, I'm not going to say all, 90% of the complaints that we receive have to do with people merging together at a food truck, noise, trash, all coming from private citizens, private homes that live adjacent to or next to the food truck. If you're going to be on private property, we want a letter from the property owner that you can be there. What we have found in a number of properties that the private property owner doesn't know anything about it, however, the tenant is the, who's using, and I'll use the, you know, the Dairy Mart on Island Pond Road as an example. The property owner didn't know anything about it, the tenant was the one who gave the permission to the food truck to be there. So, we are requiring notification from the owner that they are in support of having a food truck on their property. Issues like noise, trash, parking are discussed in the ordinance, making sure that the, you know, the site is kept clean, we're not dealing with excessive noise. And one of the problems with regard to parking, some of these who are open real, real, real late attract 40 or 50 people with cars, and that creates its own problem as well. Permit costs, right now, our permit on public property is $225 on public property, and that's for three months, and then we have $150 for renewal. On private property, what we will be charging is $450 for six months with a $150 renewal. So, if you're going to keep staying at the same spot and working, you would just end up paying $150 fee every six months to the city. We've also, in the ordinance, have requested that the actual permit must be posted at the location. That way, if DPW, HHS, police, fire ordinance walks up and says, "We need to see your permit", if they don't have it, they get shut down. Because we get a lot of, "Well, my brother owns, he made the application, I just drive the truck, I don't have the permit, I don't know where he has it, so we want to make sure that it's posted in the vehicle." Enforcement is going to be by DPW, HHS, code, police, fire. All of us have the opportunity to weigh in on an issue at a particular location based upon our purview. I can't go in and issue a fine with regard to somebody on a Friolator, but HHS and/or fire may be able to do that. So, we put in there that the entities who have control over the various things will be able to issue the fines. On public property, the fine goes to the food truck vendor. On private property, the fine goes to the property owner. So, and that's the way our ordinances are set up in the city with regard to private property. So, a private property owner is, you know, the way we look at it is that they're not going to want to pay these fines. Or if they are going to pay the fine, they're going to clean up their act to be able to make sure that it's operating correctly. The fines that we have put in there for everything associated with the food trucks is $100 per incident out there, and we've added in at the end of the ordinance what an appeals process can be as well. A lot of these things that I just went through, councilors, I had sent the letter later this afternoon, it's probably 3:00, that kind of just highlighted these. And in front of the council for next week, I'm going to go through in the next day or two and make sure that you have a memo from me similar to this that kind of hits the highlights as well. But in the document, you know, as I believe Counselor Allen and Devia said, there's a lot in there. A lot of that actually is what was created when we did the public way food trucks. So, it is, it has worked out pretty well for that. So, from our standpoint, I think everybody that's been associated with this, and all of those entities that I talked about were in all those meetings, this was sent out lastly, I believe, the first week of July or second week of July to everybody, all the comments that we got back. So, everybody's been able to opine in on what we're doing, how we're doing it, and we agreed that we wanted to get this in front of the city council this winter to be able to hit the ground running in the spring. So, those are kind of the highlights that I hit. And, you know, if anybody has any questions, want to get some comments, happy to do so. And I believe we are supposed to be on the agenda for Monday night. So, I will be there to discuss this, and I think I got a couple other things on the agenda, so I'll be there for the meeting. But, you know, at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions, comments, criticisms, complaints with what we're proposing here so that we can get it addressed at the meeting on Monday night.
Sure, thank you, Chris, for that. I do have a couple of questions, but another turn over to Councilor Allen first.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I got this started a little bit with Chris, but that was the end of the 50/50, Chris's thing. I mean, I got it started, I helped set up meetings, I attended the meetings, but Chris did the lion's share work on this, so I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Everybody knows that, he really drove this. And Chris, what are you expecting on Monday? Are you expecting a vote, or are you expecting a?
It's first step, so.
All right.
You know, part of me is, yeah, I would love to get through with questions, but, you know, as I believe Counselor Devilla said, there's a lot in there. So, you know, I would hope that councilors who might be, you know, I don't know what the word is, you know, concerned that we're pushing something through, that's why I wanted to get it now, so that if there's concerns or people need some more information and we need to table it for a few weeks, that's why I wanted to get it in now, so that it doesn't really cause us a problem as we move through, you know, the next few months.
I think that's good. I like the step, you know, the first step.
Yeah.
All right, that's good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Chris, quick question. Who participated in drafting of this? Was particularly, was it any food truck vendors consulting with this?
Not to my, not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, so it was more of an internal process?
Yeah, we, and we, because we had the basics from the, from the public way. And as we started to do the private way, it just kept expanding with every, all these other departments, you know, like Health and Human Services would chime in and say, "Hey, we need to make sure we take care of this." Police ordinance, the same thing, police, fire, code. So, it was really put together. The only person that I would say that has been associated with mobile food trucks that I've had discussions with has been Orlando Ramos. Orlando had a, they had a, like, a little food truck thing set up up on Boston Road. And I know my conversation with them was, "Hey, you know, you're on a big open piece of land, you have more than enough parking." There was more than food, two food trucks, but that was, that's kind of the way that I look at these things should, should operate. You know, they were separated, meaning that, you know, cars just couldn't drive anywhere, they had picnic tables, they had trash, and everything was, was working really well there. So, the issue, you know, we just want to make sure that at this point, we can regulate them.
Very well. Chris, some quick questions. So, over my own district with the Elks, they have Tuesday food trucks.
Yep.
And that's obviously private lot. Are they going to be required to get a permit or one day event? How does that work under this new ordinance?
By law, they should have a permit now. They should be, they should be getting, even if you operate on private property, you are supposed to be getting a one-day permit. And when we put this together, we made sure that this does not override one-day permits for events, you know, one- or two-day permits for events and things like that. So, entities like that, you know, you know, that may be something we got to add in, add into it that, you know, "Hey, you know, you're going to need a permit for this, and you're only going to be operating, you know, one day a week, or, you know, you know, three days a month," or something like that. But right now, we're looking at it as these things, these entities will be operating, you know, at a minimum of three to four days a week. But if that, you know, if that is a case that somebody is interested in, that's fine. And, you know, as in another example in your neighborhood, Counselor, the food zone on the corner of Oakland and Belmont, you know, depending upon which day, there's either three or four that are there. And they are literally right across the street from an apartment building. So, there's, you know, there's complaints associated with that, with lighting and things like that. So, you know, they can, they can relocate. So, those are the ones that we were getting complaints about. Now, are they run well? You know, I, we haven't heard complaints about, you know, you know, too many people or, you know, tons of trash, there is trash, but it's just more their location than anything else.
Right. So, Chris, I do have a plethora of questions, but I'm going to keep it, I'm sure my colleagues in the council will have more questions as well. So, any, before any certificates issued, all the fines, if they have a fine, they have to be paid before a certification, right? I think you froze. Yeah, just to let you know, you froze. Can everybody else hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Chris, I know you can't hear me, but you froze, but. Chris, maybe you can, there you go, look, I'll look back in, there you go. We're going to take a quick recess until Chris Ignoli signs back on. The time is now 5:22. Just going to give him a minute to sign back on. Ms. RC, can you hear me?
I can.
Councilor Whitfield, can you hear me?
Yes, Counselor, I can hear you.
Yeah, we're just waiting for Chris to sign back on. There he goes. There you go.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Chris.
I can't remember where I left off.
We were talking about private property and one-day permits.
Oh, yeah. And that, right now, there is a process in place for somebody to get a one-day permit, and that's handled through HHS and police and fire and, and that for private property, and that happens all the time. If an entity like that would like to join, you know, as part of our permit, you know, maybe there's a modification of the ordinance that gives you, you know, rather than paying a certain amount, they can pay a less amount if they only use one day a week type of thing. So, yeah, I'm open, because I'm sure we're going to run into a lot of, you know, specific, special issues along the way.
So, Chris, no offense, but why is this, is this going to be on the DPW and not HHS?
We, we issue the permits now for everything in the public way. And HHS, as far as these mobile food vendors, they get a certificate from HHS right now, even if they're in the public way, that their food truck is acceptable from a health standpoint to operate. Fire also looks at them to make sure that if they have any sort of Friolators, grills, generators, any of that sort of stuff, that they are okay. We are still going to require that, and since we already have the mechanism in place for permitting, we decided that the permitting would go through the DPW.
Okay. So, Chris, I have here, and I couldn't find it here on the proposed ordinance, talking about right away, in private property. So, this happened, what's today, today is, Wednesday? What's today's date? Wednesday, Thursday?
Today is the 12th.
Wednesday.
Today's Wednesday. Jesus, a long day. So, this happened Monday, perhaps, or Sunday? So, Ryan DX, TD Bank, are the lot there. And, you know, I don't want to interfere with anybody making a good, you know, making ends meet on their business, but we also have to think about public safety, and what I saw didn't concern me. So, I don't want to hold this up, I don't know, probably, you know, if you can see it, but there is a food truck there, I'm not going to mention the name, and if you look facing this, so they park here, facing this way, there's parking spots.
Yep.
And so, people come over, they order the food, and what concerns me is that people backing up.
Right.
They're not going to pay attention, they're going to hit somebody, or that person who's by is not going to be paying attention, and hit the car.
Yep.
The other thing is, the way this car, this person was located, he was taking up like four or five parking spaces.
Exactly.
Or recently. And then, to go through, similar to what's happening in the food zone, the exit, it's like you have to go their way.
Right.
So, you have traffic flow going that way, which concerns me greatly.
And on the, and on that particular parcel, Counselor, people are cutting through those parking lots all the time.
Correct.
And that was one of the reasons is that in there, if they were going to be on that, you know, if they came to us for an application on that particular property, they would have to give us a layout, show us a plan, where the food truck's going to be. Does it still provide the amount of parking that it has to? What are you going to put up for cones, barrels, barricades, to make sure people can't, you know, back into the truck? So, there's going to be those requirements now on the private property side, number one, so that it's safe. Number two, my then question becomes, did the bank, does the bank owner know about it? You know, does the private, does the property owner not necessarily know about it versus just going inside and saying to the owner or to the bank itself, "Hey, we're just putting a food truck out here for a few hours," you know, and they probably say, "We don't care." But like you just said, all of a sudden, somebody backs into somebody, where's that liability? And as part of the application process, we require the insurance, the bonds, all of that stuff that we do on public property is now going to be required on private property. So, some of the things that we're going to try, we're making sure on this, is everybody that's going to be out there with a food truck needs to be legal as far as all of their certificates from HHS, DPW, police, fire, all that stuff, because we do know that we have a lot of fly-by-nighters out there, you know, that may operate a day or two, so.
Right, right. So, so basically, these calls for anybody who has a food truck has gone through the process, that a city official, an officer, police officer, DPW, HHS, fire, they can come up, or inspector, ask for a permit, and they have to produce.
And it should be posted.
It should be posted.
Yeah, so when they go there, you know, you go, you go to like the Big E. When you go to the Big E, every food vendor has up there a posted certificate, and it's going to be the same thing, it's going to be up there so that we can look at it. You know, you go into a gas station, they have to have their stuff, you go into certain little stores, they have to have those. So, you know, that way, a, an officer or DPW person could go in and say, "Okay, where's your permit? There it is, okay, you're good."
So, why, why only what two food trucks and not why limited to one? What, where did number two come from?
I picked two.
You picked two. Well, that wasn't easy, I said you just picked two.
Yeah, I picked two, and, and, you know, the other thing too is that, you know, I was mentioning Representative Ramos about the property on Boston Road, I think they might have had four or five out there, which for a parcel of that size was fine. You know, so the idea, you know, I picked two simply because, you know, when I was looking at certain areas, I said, "Jeez, you can't fit more than two." But I'm open to changes in that, simply because it was a number that I picked that, you know, whether, you know, whether it's yourself or any other counselor, may or may not agree. But either way, it's not like they can go on a little parcel and put six of them because they won't be in compliance. You know, I think we have enough in there on zoning on that. But then, on the other hand, you know, the one on Boston Road, do you want 30 food trucks out there? Well, somebody might say, "Yeah, that's a great idea," but does it, does it start to cause a problem? So, I picked two because it sounded like a good number, and I'm open to any discussion that we want to have on that.
I'm sure when I discuss on that, because I'm not, to be clear, I'm not exactly sure it was the right amount myself.
Yeah.
And so, all I, all I'm concentrating on is safety.
Yep.
Making sure that the quality of life of the rest has not impacted negatively, and these people make a living, because it's a good way, decent way of making a living. So, with that being said, Councilor Whitfield, you have any questions, ma'am?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, who's that talking?
Officer May.
Officer May, is it Officer May? I'm sorry. Rosemont?
It's Officer May.
Right, okay, go ahead.
So, I had a question, because I attended a few of the meetings, and I know we're talking about food trucks, and I know it's the AgriPer license and everything else, but is this going to also be something implemented to, let's say, the cell phone vendors or any kind of soliciting when it comes to pop-up tents, carts, the ice cream, the Italian ice? Is it, is it going to be something for everyone, or are we just sticking to just food, mobile big food trucks right now?
Chris? I'm glad, I'm glad you asked that, because the, we're, within the ordinance proposal, I'm separating mobile, mobile, mobile food trucks that are going to be in a parking lot or on a, on a street that are going to be there. An Italian ice vendor who is mobile and moving all over the place, and this year was a big year because there's a company out there, I can't remember their name, and they just give out franchise, and there's probably 25 or 30 of them in the And they just give out franchise and there was probably twenty-five or thirty of them in the city, and you saw the people running around all over to play pushing these carts. So it doesn't necessarily do that, but as part of the ordinance, I was thinking the exact same thing you were, Officer. Is that um there's a lot of vendors out there that are on the street, cell phone vendors. Et cetera, that set up uh that set up court there, that we can add into this. Um you know, on-street sales or whatever you wanna call it. Uh or uh out-of-building sales that are, you know, part of a building. The dollar, or the, I believe the Dollar Tree on Lower Main Street. Is one of those that they'll be out there with cell phones or iPads and they'll have everything set up, and I see the one on. State Street by Oak Street that they're out there. So I have no problem whatsoever expanding this to address those.
Yes, please, I just wanna make sure, just because in part then, that is something that keeps reoccurring. And it's always, you know, the the managers, it changes so many different managers at the Family Dollars. In a lot of these locations, but they, they also call the police and say they don't want the people there, they just choose not to leave. And talk to the people, it's like, you know, he, he say they let me stay here, the other one did it, and. I'm, that's why I wanna make sure that way, they have to have all these things in writing with permission in writing before even getting. The the license.
And I started to, cuz there's a section in here. In the overall ordinance that talks about transient vendors, which is probably what like the Italian ice thing falls under. And then we also have um.
Chris, can you point us to where that is, the transient, can you give us the number?
Excuse me, Counselor?
Can you point to, can you point us to where that is? You're talking about transient uh people?
Yeah, section, I don't think there's page numbers on here, but uh. Inside of the entire chapter two, two seventy-nine, it's called peddling and soliciting. There's a Hawker and Peddlers, which I think is what that would fall under, Officer, which is where I would expand a lot of that sort of stuff. Uh that's Article One, we are adding Article Eight, which is all about mobile food trucks. Uh because the rest of this code talks about door-to-door sales and sales near schools, panhandling. But Article Four talks about the transient vendors and what the definition of that is. And that is more, uh and it's funny when you do read some of this language. I think the only people that were around when some of this language was put together is Counselor Allen. Uh cuz it talks about, you know, people pushing, you know, uh. Uh carts selling fish and, you know, it sounds like really nineteen ten, nineteen twenties type of thing there. So uh for what Officer Mady was talking about, you know, we can add something into Hawkers and Peddler section. And uh transient vendors, I think, are are addressed, but I'll look at that again.
Alright, thank you, Chris.
I have to apologize, I gotta go to East Forest Park Civic Association in Six.
Thank you, Counselor Allen.
Yeah, thanks.
Say hi to them all for me, Counselor.
Beer and wine at the Island Pond Road Convenience Store, that's the first thing to know.
Have they tried that before?
Uh three different convenience stores have tried it, none have succeeded, this is the fourth one to try it.
Uh I thought it had been before, I thought it had come up a few times.
Yeah, was it Murphy's, it was that, um you know, two other places than this one now.
Um and so just doing a quick time check, cuz now it's five thirty-five, I have a six o'clock. Across the city and the public safety in a little while, but uh so to be clear, uh Chris, uh you're gonna bring this back on Monday? You're gonna give us another rundown of this.
Excuse me, thank you, good job, Chris.
Thank you.
Well, you're gonna be working and looking at uh the. The the section of two seventy-nine, I found it, two seventy-nine. Article four, two seven, two seventy-nine, Article four. Yeah, uh are you gonna uh include that by Monday or do you wanna hold off?
No, it's, it's too late to get it on the agenda, I'll discuss it. And I think, I think we can do, if it's decided, I think we could do a step one vote and then modify. But like I said, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions, and if we have to end up tabling it till the next meeting, I I I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, uh oh, is there anything else you wanna uh point out, Chris?
I, not, not in this, I don't think so.
Okay, very well, and this will go in fact, in fact, on passage or ninety days?
Yeah, it would be, it would be in in uh on passage. Uh and I, we probably, I haven't spoken to anybody really about this. You know, usually when we make these types of ordinance changes, you know, that we usually don't go out the next day and start finding people. We usually put together, yeah, we usually put together a little flyer and start giving it to people. And that's why I kinda wanted to do that a little bit in the winter, so that as we get to February and March, we can start handing these things out to people. So that they can get uh get the proper uh, you know, certifications, permits before the, you know, the real good weather starts in the spring.
Yeah, I hear you. Uh now, is there any restriction? In here about having a food truck near a dispensary or a package?
Uh I don't think so. It, we have a, we have a distance from a residential property and we have a distance from a school. But uh cuz that's part of the overall ordinance, but I don't think we have anything uh, anything associated with that and. Um I'm trying to think around here, I don't think I've seen a food truck, uh however. I've seen him in Connecticut.
Okay.
At a lot of the, yeah, a lot of those vendors, cuz some of the vendors have enough parking to do it, some of them don't.
But uh uh what's the footage uh for the residential, how far away they gotta be?
Uh five hundred feet.
Same thing for schools?
Yes. Yeah, I believe it's school, yeah, schools, I believe it's five hundred.
Okay, excellent, excellent, alright. Uh time is now five forty, um Chris, you have anything else you wanna add?
I don't think so, all I wanted to say, Officer Mady or uh Sue Haley or Officer Roseman. Uh you need to contact me, feel free to come downstairs and happy to talk to you.
Thank you.
Counselor Doggla?
Uh Counselor Whitfield.
Hi, Chris, um it's funny, I just talked to Orlando about these ordinances and like some of the things that you're addressing. We talked about and I think that they're great, the only thing that did concern me is you were like two per parking and two per location. Yeah, we could um think about like maybe the size of the location and then determine what to fit on, that might be more cumbersome, but. Um that's the only thing that I really wanted to discuss because the. The ice cart, you addressed that as well, um icy cart, which I didn't think was a food truck, so. Um I just wanna say great job on this because I've gotten some complaints about the litter. More than the noise, um and the ownership over the person that's renting. The location, cuz like the owners really don't know sometimes, so. Good job, I just wanna say good job, I won't belabor the point, um thank you, um Mister Chair.
No, thank you. Uh very well, uh well, and then, so we're gonna be uh on this on Monday. I'm sure it's gonna be full discussion, but this is gonna come back to us one way or the other.
Yeah.
Of course, and so um we will uh take it from there. Nobody has any more comments, suggestions than uh thank you, everybody, the time is now five forty, five forty. And um. Thank you for joining us and uh.
Thank you.
I joined in the meeting at five forty, thank you.